Good evening, I'll call this meeting of the Carisville City Council to order if you'll please stand for our pledge or notification.
Let us pray. To God whose creative power is seen in the forces of nature, in the sun and the rain, in the calm and in the storm, and whose grace is seen in human kindness and generosity. This is true of all people and every generation and places. We can respond to those in distress and need. Guide us to be resourceful and persistent. We ask your guidance for the leadership of this community, for this meeting, and for the demands of the days to come. Guide our decisions to be faithful. Amen.
Let us pledge the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the very blood for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Over the roll, please.
Carrie Hodges, Ward 1.
Here.
Jane Stepp, Ward 2. Louis Tonsmire, Ward 3.
Here.
Calvin Cooley, Ward 4.
Here.
Diane Tate, Ward 5. Taff Rin, Ward 6.
Here.
Thank you, Meredith. First order of business tonight is the approval of our council meeting minutes from August the 17th. The council, you've had these well in advance, and tonight had an opportunity to review them, now would be the chance to make any edits. And if there are none, a motion to approve would be in order.
Motion to approve.
All in favor indicate by saying aye. Minutes are approved. Mr. Grove, get us started off, please.
First item is a resolution relative to time change for 6th youth day. The group wants to move to fall, they want to move to the next meeting, which is 23rd September. That changes meeting time from the usual 7 to 9 again.
Work session at eight.
Yep.
Okay. Any discussion? If not, a motion is in order.
Motion to approve.
All in favor indicate by saying aye. Motion carries unanimously. Mr. Manino.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. This is the second reading of proposed ordinance change to the alcohol control ordinance. It was written in accordance with the laws that had changed, the state law according to the last legislative session where they now allow beer to be sold where it's manufactured. The only place it affects in the city of Carisville is the Budweiser plant right now. And they'll be having an event at the end of this month. And these changes do allow for what they're proposing to do. We will have future changes to the alcohol ordinance that further reflect the changes in state law. And with that, Alcohol Control Board did recommend approval of these changes.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions for Randy on this item? If there are none, chair will entertain a motion. Motion to approve. All in favor indicate by saying aye. Motion carries unanimously. Continue on, please, Randy.
Yes, thank you again. The property at 159 Edouard Drive was part of the first-time homebuyers program. With that, the property owner has fulfilled their obligations and have requested that the lien that was placed on the property as part of the program be released. And with that, we recommend your approval of this item.
Okay. Questions, comments, or motions? Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Randy. Chief McCann, you have the next few here.
This is a request to approve the federal annual report that we do every year. We have to submit it to DOJ before September 1st. Mayor Santini actually signed it on August 31st. It basically accounts for the money that we receive from the Department of Justice and how much money we spent. We received $126,963.65, spent $273,435.26. Majority of that were on vehicles that we purchased. However, we purchased protective gear, Level 4 active shooter kits, which includes the vest, helmet, and goggles. And we also purchased some weapons.
Okay. Any discussion on this item? Now, chair will entertain a motion. Motion to approve. All in favor indicate by saying aye. Motion carries unanimously.
Based on the security assessment that we did last year, late last year, a recommendation was made that we separate our interview rooms from our existing video. And we sent out bids to three different companies, and precise digital was the low bid at $17,000. This is a budgeted item. It's paid for with federal asset forfeiture money. And I recommend a low bid of $17,000.
Any discussion, and if not, a motion.
Motion to approve.
All in favor indicate by saying aye. Motion carries unanimously. Next one, chief, please.
The next one is a patrol vehicle that got wrecked last weekend. Had an officer working in an accident on Highway 41. An elderly gentleman struck him from behind while he was working in an accident with blue lights on. Patrol vehicle's a 2010 Crown Vic with 88,000 miles on it. We request to purchase a new Dodge Charger at $23,453. We plan on using all the equipment in the Crown Vic. Stuff that we need to buy, we think we can afford to buy out of the $240,000 that was budgeted last month for the new patrol cars. The money will come from the insurance fund from the city of Carisville.
And these are bids Robert O'Rourke gave us, they're holding that bid in place.
Yes, sir.
So, local vendor getting the business there.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any other discussion, and if not, a motion.
Was the officer and the elderly man okay?
He was in the car. He had finished working the accident, was trying to pull out and leave, still had his blue lights on when he got hit. He saw the car coming, tensed up, and got smacked. He was sore for a couple of days, but he's back at work now. Yeah, it was a fairly serious accident.
See those things on TV where the officer's outside the vehicle, people will do that.
Right.
Be disastrous.
He was in it. You know, he just had to watch it and take it.
Good thing he's okay.
Yeah.
Absolutely. Questions, comments, or motions? Second. All in favor indicate by saying aye. Motion carries unanimously. Council, we have three items to add to the agenda tonight. And while we got Chief McCann, if I'm going to ask for a motion to add those three items to the agenda. Motion to do so.
Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye. We got three items added. Chief, you want to handle that?
Yes, sir. This is a request to purchase 54 Glock Model 17s, Generation 4, replacement pistols for all of our officers. Our original weapons were purchased in 1990 with federal asset forfeiture funds, and they're wearing out. And it's actually cheaper for us to purchase, to trade our current weapons in and purchase new weapons than fix the current weapons. The cost of each Glock 17 is $409. Smyrna Police Distributors will give us at least $225 on the trade, could be more, which makes the cost $184 per pistol. The total is $99.36. And they are the low bidder. We had three bids. This is not a budgeted item, however, we need it because I think it's important for every officer at the PD to carry the same caliber weapon. And so, we're going to be trading in 40 calibers and buying 9 millimeters. And it also is going to be paid for with federal asset forfeiture.
And while it's not budgeted, this is part of the federal asset forfeiture.
There's plenty. Yes, sir.
Great. Okay. Any questions or discussion? If not, a... All in favor indicate by saying aye. Motion carries. Thanks, chief.
Thank you.
Chief Carter, you have the next item, please.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Good evening, mayor and council. I bring before you this evening a request to purchase five complete sets of structural personal protective equipment. This is the heavy clothing or gear that the firefighters wear while they're engaged in firefighting. It's a protective gear. The particular sets that we're replacing is greater than 10 years of age or in repair to such a state that can't be repaired. And of course, it is NFPA compliant. This is a budgeted item. We are below our budgeted amount. However, I point out to you that on your budget agenda, the original quote that we had was for $8,020. So, we've got a lower quote that we've submitted to you during the work session that we're asking approval of $8,750, a reduction of $1,250. We found a correction on some lettering with the manufacturer. This is a single-source purchase for the gear. We buy this gear directly from a manufacturer, and we cut out the middleman that way. Respectfully request approval of purchase of $8,750 for five sets of turnout gear.
Questions, comments, or motions? Motion to approve. All in favor indicate by saying aye. Motion carries unanimously. Meredith, I want to see which one you give the second to. Mr. Osobrock.
Good afternoon, mayor and council. Tonight I come before you with a request to approve a award, a bid for traffic signal maintenance. My department maintains about 17 traffic signals, school crossings, and flashers in the city. These are non-DOT route signals. And we periodically have replaced loops, general maintenance on these facilities. And we bid this out, had three bids, and the people that currently do our work were the low bidder, CBK Mechanical. They're out of Carrollton, Georgia, and they're the low bidder by far. And they include a one-year warranty on loop work. And this is a budgeted item. And we're recommending that council approve a two-year low-bid contract with CBK Mechanical with a not-to-exceed $10,000 per year award on it.
Okay. Any discussion on this item? If not, a motion's in order.
Motion to approve.
All in favor indicate by saying aye. Motion carries unanimously. Next item, please, Don.
Okay. We need to purchase a transformer to replenish our stock. We recently took a transformer to Georgia Highlands College, and we need to replace that transformer. We put it out for bids, three bids, and we're asking council... We had, what we're recommending is not the low bid, but it's $168 on a $15,265 purchase. It's not the low bid, but it is the lowest total ownership cost. And that, over the life of a 30-year life of a transformer, we calculate the total ownership cost. And this unit's cheaper, and it has the shortest delivery time. So, those two factors outweighed the fact that we're not choosing the low bidder, which is only $165 difference. So, we're recommending that council approve the purchase of the Gresco Transformer for $15,265. And this is a budgeted item.
Any discussion on this item? Not a motion. Motion to approve the best bid, which is from Gresco.
Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Don. Mr. Anderson.
Yes, sir, mayor and council. This is, bids were taken for the roof replacement of the Carisville Gymnastics Center. We received five bids. One bid was thrown out. Of the four bids, we recommending the low bid from Bartow Roofing in the amount of $66,955.22. It's a budgeted item in the parts and recreation maintenance and operation budget. I recommend this approval of this, and mayor to sign any and all related documents.
Thank you, Greg. Any discussion? Not a motion.
Motion to approve.
All in favor indicate by saying aye. Motion carries unanimously. Mr. Jesse.
Good evening, mayor and council. The Fiber Department requests to purchase a 48-volt DC power plant, AC power plant, for the new Fiber Node building. The power plant is necessary for us to provide centralized redundant power to all the city, county, and customer equipment housed in the new node building. This item must be purchased and installed before we can move forward with the cutover from the old building. This system will have enough capacity for future growth. The power plant provides eight hours of battery backup to all devices inside the Fiber Node building such as servers, storage arrays, telecom equipment, carrier routers, and so on. This is specialized equipment. The cost of the 48-volt DC power plant, AC power plant is $52,499.81. And the purchase from Lufman Buyers Telecom is recommended for your approval.
Thank you. Any questions for Todd on this item? If there are none, a motion's in order. Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Todd. Mr. Sanders, you have the next one?
Thank you, mayor. This is a bid award for a resurfacing project that includes 10 city streets and Dellinger Park. The low bidder was Bartow Haven at $489,829.62. It's funded from three sources. The grant that we received from GDOC for $252,000. About $96,000 will come from SPOST, and about $140,000 will be used from the park bond to pay for the resurfacing of Dellinger.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Sanders on this item? If not, a motion's in order.
Motion to approve.
All in favor indicate by saying aye. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Tommy. Time for the Bob Jones Show.
First up, we've got our annual chemical purchase. This is a routine kind of housekeeping thing we do every year. As you all know, we purchase multiple chemicals in bulk for both the water and wastewater plant. And this just facilitates more timely orders and keeps us from coming in here virtually every meeting with at least one item related to a tank full of something. I won't read you the entire list, but there were minimal changes this year. There was one change in our alum provider, and there was one chemical added. It's an activated carbon slurry. This is something that we only feed, if at all, a week or two out of the year. It helps us control taste and odor issues when the lake turns over in the spring and in the fall. So, would offer that for your approval. The net change was very minimal. There were certain things that went up and down, but the net effect is going to be about the same as last year as far as a cost to us.
Good. Okay. Any discussion or questions for Bob on this item?
Have you actually done inventory of all these items to see that they're required to be restocked?
Yes. No, they are. And the biggest one on there actually is alum, because when we order that, we actually get a load of 6,000 gallons. Our tank holds 6,000 gallons. And whether we order 6,000 gallons or not, we get billed for 6,000 gallons. So, we try to time these things very close to keep from paying for material that we don't receive. And that's the most critical one on the list. But yes, these items are inventoried practically hourly or at the end of every day.
Sounds good to me.
Motion to approve.
All in favor indicate by saying aye. Motion carries unanimously. Continue on, please, Bob.
Next up, the DNC warehouse, we need to do a restock purchase. This is all of the pipes, parts, clamps, repair material for fixing leaks, adding lines, servicing new construction. Bids were taken. HD Supply Water Works was low bid at $10,630.20. Recommend that for your approval.
Okay. Questions, comments, or motions? Motion to approve the low bid. All in favor indicate by saying aye. Motion carries unanimously. Next one.
Next up, we need to replace slide gates for our number one and number four positions at the wastewater plant. These gates are essentially gigantic isolation valves. Really what's driving this is a need to change bearings in the bottom of two of our screw pumps there. We can't get water in them, so we need to get a dry work area. These gates, the gates that we have existing are original to the plant. They don't seal. And all the work that we do in there, currently, we put on waders and put pumps in, and we go in somewhere between knee and waist deep. And you just, you can't do that for this work. So, we took pricing to replace that equipment. This will be, if council approves, the authorization will be for two separate companies. The first will be Waterman, and they actually produce the gates themselves. So, the hardware purchase will be $12,700 to Waterman. Next would be the installation of that hardware. And that, the Southern Machine has provided us a cost of $21,860. And within that number is a $9,600 contingency that will provide for attachment and additional work should the concrete that they have to attach the gate frame to be in poor shape, which we have encountered in the past. So, we think that that may be an issue here as well. And this is a budgeted item and would recommend for your approval.
Thank you. Any discussions?
Motion to approve the hardware and installation purchase.
Second. All in favor indicate by saying aye. Motion carries unanimously. And again, you mentioned in work session, Southern Machine's going to be doing a portion of that work for us?
Yes, sir.
Local company. Thank you.
They are. They have done this same type of work for us multiple times.
Very good. Next item, please.
Next up, we're asking council to consider a resolution that would authorize the water department to refund charges for water and sewer related to water produced by the Anheuser-Busch Brewery here locally that is used for emergency drinking water. And I think everybody's aware of the weather these days, and we know what's happened with Harvey and Irma and Jose behind Irma as well. It's not much of a stretch to think that there will be a continued need for this. And we just would like to actually acknowledge some of the good deeds that one of our industrial neighbors is doing. And quite honestly, just make it a little less costly for them to do it. They're going to do it whether we do this or not. They've been doing it for years. And I think it's worthy of note, they did not ask for this. It's just something that, in watching the news, we're sitting around talking one day, and you've said, you know what? This seems like something we ought to be able to do. So, Mr. Archer's office reviewed it, and this is the mechanism by which it's to be done, so we'll put that out there for your approval. I would note, too, that the way this will, we'll try to administer this is not to just give a blanket credit, but to work with the brewery and say, okay, what have you done, and what do we need to put back on there? We'll sort of meter this out as we go.
Well, I want to thank you. You said you're not going to take credit for it, but somebody needs to, so I'll throw it at you. But I think it's a real source of pride for everybody in this community to see the work that Anheuser-Busch is doing and the recognition they've gotten nationwide for what they're doing here and helping people during these natural disasters. They've done it for years, and you know, I don't have anything to do with it, but it is kind of a source of pride when you hear that there's Carisville water that's going to help people that are in a lot of need. And so, I think it's a great idea, and I'm glad that council's going to consider this to give something small back to the brewery just to at least acknowledge the contributions that they're making, and it's a good move, so thanks for bringing it up.
Yeah, I agree. I think the folks who are going to need this stuff, the water's going to be worth a whole lot more than the dollars we're going to authorize here tonight.
Mr. Archer, go ahead and throw a wet blanket on it.
What was the amount you wanted in the blank?
$2,500. $2,500 would give them roughly half a million gallons of water at the current rates they're paying.
So, half a million cans?
No, it'd be 5 million cans, half a million gallons of water, yes.
Our conversation during the work session, we brought up the fact that I had prepared this with Hurricane Harvey in mind. And then after I prepared it, we started hearing about the other hurricanes. And so, as I said I would do during the work session, I have made a modification, an amendment to the first paragraph and the last paragraph. What I have changed it to, I've deleted reference to Hurricane Harvey, and I've added this language. Where several recent hurricanes have devastated portions of the states of Texas with historic floods and threatens to do the same in the state of Louisiana and other states within the United States, including Florida, Georgia, South Carolina, and North Carolina. And then in the last paragraph, I struck the reference to Hurricane Harvey and just changed it to affected by such hurricane. We'll draft these changes, so you agree to adopt this, and we'll get them to Mayor in the morning.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions or discussion?
Motion to approve the refund, $2,500 with the adopted language that the city attorney just recommended.
Very well, very well constructed motion. Very well constructed, second. All in favor indicate by saying aye. Well constructed, unanimous vote. Thank you, Bob. You have one, no, you have two more still.
Got two more. Next up, this is one that's been a long time coming. We've been talking about this for years. We are at the point where we need to do the detailed design and bidding for the changes needed to comply with our pending wastewater discharge permit from EPD. These will be the detailed design documents preparation through bidding support. We entered into an engineering services agreement with Hazen and Sawyer. They were selected about a year ago through a competitive process for this particular task. They have supplied a quote for $2136,000 to do that scope of work. Again, that would be all designed through bid support, so issuing bid documents and awarding bids. We have anticipated this for a while. It's a budgeted item, and would recommend that for your approval. Two notes, more legal housekeeping notes of this. During the review of this item, it was noted by council that our engineering services agreement would need to have a term established with it. When it was passed about a year ago, there was no term for the agreement. So, I would request that council approve a term of not less than five years. That will give us enough time to do this project to completion under that single authorization. Additionally, if council would, in their motion, establish an effective date for that engineering services agreement. When it was originally passed, it was 9/1/2016. I see no reason why we don't just stick with that original date. So, if we can address those three items in one motion, or however that needs to be done.
So, is it five years from the effective date?
It would be five years from the effective date. That would put us right at the end of construction, and we may need to come in and reauthorize that, but we'll do that if we need to.
You'd rather do that versus just getting a six-year term?
If you want to do a six-year, there's nothing wrong, you know, from my standpoint with doing a six-year term if that's your preference. I'm fine with that.
Okay. Well, whatever council wants to do, just construct the motion in that way.
Motion to approve this, one of the three things that you mentioned.
9/1/2016 effective date?
Yes.
Five-year or six-year term?
I'd do six.
Six-year term? And the 2.136 million?
Yes. All three of those included in said motion.
Well constructed motion with assistance from Bob.
With the dente by Bob.
There you go. Thank you. So, we got a motion, I think. Thank you very much. All in favor indicate by saying aye. Very good. Thank you. And you got one more?
I got one more. Last, I got a picture for you here. I didn't show that in work session. We have, yes, this is what we call Frankenstein. This is a 1996 Dodge one-ton truck that we got from surplus from the electric department. And we cut up a trailer-mounted sewer jetting machine and put it in the back of it and have used it for years. In 2013, council approved purchase of a replacement truck. And since that time, this truck has essentially become obsolete. It's still fully functional. It still works. And in looking for a home for it, one of the issues with this truck is it has to be stored inside. You can't let it freeze. So, it's in the way in the winter. And we were looking for a home for it and found out that the city of Emerson actually had a need for it, that it would be useful for them in running sewer services and doing some work that they typically have to rely on Bartow County to do right now. So, they expressed an interest in it, came out, looked at it, and said they'd love to have it. So, we are here to ask you to approve a transfer of this unit to the city of Emerson and send it on to a good home.
Very good. I love the fact, you didn't mention that in work session, that you used that for how many years after it was surplus by electric department?
You know, I don't know when we actually got it. It went new to the electric department as far as I know, but I don't know when we acquired that truck.
Some time ago, then. Some time ago then, if you don't remember.
Been a while.
Very good. Questions, comments, or motions?
Motion to approve.
Thank you.
Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Bob, you got enough for one night? Good. Thanks. Mr. Grove, you want to do that next item?
Yeah, it's a deed and dedication for a water line that runs to the New Ingalls filling station. Something we standardly do when something's built, the city spec and dedicated to the city. It's got a maintenance bond in it to protect the taxpayer from any kind of problem with the work and shipper carriers. Recommend it for your approval.
Thank you. Questions, comments, or motions?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Mr. Menino, if you'll get us with the amendment to the Village Hill Agreement.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. As you had noted, this is a proposed amendment to the Village Hill Commercial Subdivision Development Agreement. It's currently under construction. It'll be the future site also of, I believe, fire station number four. Their, an adjacent property owner is looking to do a driveway swap to put a driveway off the new roadway. With that, in discussion with the city attorney's office, he had stated there'll need to be an amendment to the development agreement to do a property swap within that. And the terms that he had mentioned are written up in the memo I had passed out. With that, we're requesting that Council authorize the mayor to sign this once it's written up and put together based on the terms that are provided in the memo.
Okay.
And that second slide shows where the actual driveway right now is on the bottom off of Old Mill Road in the D cell lane. The new location will be coming off of the new street within that. And again, Keith, out of the city attorney's office, had worked with Dan Porta on the development agreement and had noted that it will take an amendment to said agreement with that.
And they both bailed and stuck you with it.
And neither one of them showed up here, and I'd been out of town for 10 days and didn't know anything about it.
I just want the record to reflect that, that you're carrying their water for them.
They're a good man, really.
All right. Any discussion on this item? And if not, a motion's in order.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Randy. Mr. Reinhardt, you have the final item for the evening.
Well, Mayor and Council, we have received, we being the city of Carlsville, have received the first displaced family from the Hurricane Harvey. We received them on Friday, September the first. It's a family of six, consists of a husband, wife, and four children. The family has been living in a Jeep up until that point in a local residence driveway. They're working with the American Red Cross for help, basically. And the American Red Cross has reached out to our customer service folks, asked them to see if we could waive the $30 connection fee along with the advanced deposit, advanced payment or deposit that we charge. In this particular case, it was a $300 advanced payment. I made the decision at that point in time to waive the $30 fee and also to waive the deposit. The deposit was waived for the first six months, in which case, if the family stays here longer than that, it would basically require them to have a deposit on hand. I believe there has been a resolution that has been generated to, and I'll let Mr. Archer go over that.
The changes that we discussed in these executive sessions to this resolution would be identical to the changes that I read in the other one. And that is to add, to delete reference to Harvey, Hurricane Harvey, and to make it apply to several recent hurricanes, and then to add the states of Florida, Georgia, South Carolina, and North Carolina.
Does that resolution include, you'd said there's no provision in there for the six months, but I guess it's just assumed in that resolution that the finance director will be the determining factor on that?
I also suggest another change in the last paragraph.
Okay.
And it would be where I have pursuant to the guidelines to be established by the finance director for the city of Carlsville. I suggest changing that to subject to and pursuant to. And when you add it subject to, it's a little bit different than pursuant to. And it makes, gives him the authority to do the guidelines. And I would say that can and should include if he wants to limit it six months. Well, I can add six months in there if you want.
I think if you've got subject and pursuant to, we can give him the latitude to put a program in place that...
You okay with that?
I'm fine. I just want to make sure that if someone else comes in, we're treating them as fairly as we are the first.
And with that, a motion is in order. And that motion should include the notation that the suggested language change by Mr. Archer.
Motion to approve of the subject to and pursuant to language that also incorporates the six-month time constraints.
Well, the motion...
No, I'm not supposed to say what my motion is.
Okay, so you want the six months in there? All right, well, thank you. Are you still second that?
Sure. Dave, it's fine.
All right, wait, wait, wait. You want the six months in there? That's been requested in the motion and has not passed yet, but if it does...
Well, I got faith in going to.
That's fine.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't have any hard feelings either way. I mean, you felt like you were going to have to write something before we passed it?
No.
Okay. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Very good. Thank you, Tom. Right, so nothing, any other business needs to come forth, Council, this evening? I've got a few items here, and we don't really spotlight it enough, but, or maybe as often as maybe we should, but I want to point out tonight on the agenda, you know, there's, everything goes out for bid, and people that want to bid are certainly welcome to contact the city and get on our bid list. But tonight, we had patrol vehicles purchased by Robert, from Robert Lorre. We've got a gymnastics roof that's going in by Bartow Roofing. We have Elmeg resurfacing by Bartow Paving. And we have Southern Machine doing some machine work on our secondary slide gates. And I want to applaud our city folks for being good stewards of money and giving local people the opportunity to get work from the city. So, I applaud that and just wanted to note that.
I'll second that as well.
Thank you. Also, March to the Mountain is on Monday. Greg, I don't know if you've got any details on that you want to share? I know it starts at...
They canceled that. It was because of the hurricane.
Hey, Mike, you got a news story for the morning. I guess they've canceled that. The public servant luncheon, however, I want to make sure all our employees know that on Tuesday, starting at 11 o'clock at the Civic Center, it's the 18th Annual Public Servant Appreciation Lunch, it might be the 16th, maybe the 18th. But anyway, that's at the Civic Center from 11 to 2:00. Any public servant is welcome to have lunch, and that includes any retirees. So, it is simply a day for the community to thank you for what y'all do 24/7 for the community. The community wants to express their gratitude, so I would encourage all of you to come out and be recognized and honored with a really good lunch. So, just want to make sure everybody in the city was aware of that. And certainly, if you want to volunteer and come out and show your support as a member of the community, you're welcome to do that as well. Anything else that needs to come forth, Council? Chair, want to take a motion? Oh, Chief Carter.
Just one thing, we've been getting a lot of calls concerning Irma. I've been hearing all this, and just people are asking, should they be prepared or whatever? I would just like to give everybody the recommendation, please watch the weather. It's still kind of fluid. We're not going to know for sure until the next couple of days what's going to happen. We do not anticipate the impact here in the Carlsville area until Monday and Tuesday. Rebecca and I tomorrow will be pushing out some information through social media, just some common sense guidelines that people need to be prepared. We are expecting, you know, a wind event and rain event here in the Carlsville area, and we're preparing for it every day. So, we just want to make sure that everybody's aware of that and kind of be, really be watching the weather. It's going to dictate, because we're still waiting to see actually how Irma is going to slide. And we've noticed this evening that it's starting now to slide a little bit more to the west. You know, hopefully it'll go back more on the eastern pattern, but it's too fluid to tell.
While you're up here, I did know y'all pushed out a press release today concerning warning sirens. And just if you could just mention that to the general public now.
Yes, we are anticipating doing some maintenance work on our warning sirens this next week. It's a scheduled routine maintenance. However, if the weather collides with that, we will cancel that maintenance. So, we do have a date set, so I believe it is Tuesday. So, we may actually have to cancel it. But that's just a routine warning siren maintenance that we need to do.
Okay. Thank you, Chief.
Yes, sir.
Anything else? I want to adjourn that motion to adjourn.
Subdued.
Did not get her up.